Report, Manager Petrie, please.
Mr. McGinnley says, is there any way we can postpone that till after the meeting?
We have it scheduled now.
Because the schedule that you put out was for 6:00 for the State of the County Managers' Report?
No, I put, no.
On our meeting, on our meeting schedule, it says 6:00.
That was just, that says that that's one of the items that will be scheduled that day.
And Service Electric also has it designated at 6:00 on their webpage for people that want to watch it on Service Electric?
I don't know anything about what Service Electric does.
So, we're going to keep the people from the county from seeing this very important report?
The report's available and be online. Manager Petrie?
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's my honor once again to stand before you, provide the State of the County Report. As Mr. McGinnley said, the report will be put up online, as well as there are extra copies up here up front, if council members of the public were right to review it. As Councilwoman Radell joked, it's extra thick, so you may have a hard time ripping it when it's over. But today, for the State of the County Report, I wanted to report on a couple of different things, highlight some areas that we're going to be working on, and talk about where we were in 2019, where we're going in 2020. The state of the county, the state of the county is evolving. We are moving forward here in Luzerne County. There are a couple of things that we cannot do anymore. No longer can we compare ourselves to the lowest common denominator here in Luzerne County. Too often in the past have we said, well, that's just the way it's always been, and well, the Commissioners handed us this, and that's the way it works somewhere else. Ladies and gentlemen, through the hard work of this County Council and the county workers, as well as county administration, every single day that we have done over these past eight years of home rule government, we have now put Luzerne County in a position where we are on par with some of the biggest and best counties right here in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The question is now, where do we go from here? What are our next steps? What are the next five years going to look like in Luzerne County? How do we continue this growth that this County Council set forth in 2012? And how do we move forward so that in 2022, '27, and '23, we're in a much better position? The state of the county. 2019, I want to hit some highlights of where, of some of the major accomplishments that we've had here in 2019. The first, received an A-minus credit rating from Stannion and Pors. This is the highest credit rating in Luzerne County history. I want to say that again. We have gone from having no credit rating to having a triple B credit rating, to losing that credit rating, to getting a triple B minus credit rating back, to now having a three-tier jump to an A-minus credit rating. Every County Council member and every citizen in Luzerne County should be very, very pleased with that reaction. Because what has happened is the eyes of the world, the eyes of the financial world, have looked at Luzerne County and said that these are individuals who pay their debts, who make sure that they're making the right financial decisions. Under home rule form of government, over $200 million has been paid off of our debts. Over $200 million. Luzerne County Council should be very pleased with where we've come. Now, what's, this, this credit rating has been based upon many different factors. One of them is our ability to refinance, which saved us a large amount of money. Now, if you look at our debt service that we currently have, we will not be able to refinance again until 2025. So, our current debt service that we have, that we have set forth here in the 2020 budget will continue to be our debt service all the way through. We have to live within our budgets as we have, and we've been able to work on those things. But we cannot, we should be very pleased with the number, the best, if you ask me, the biggest accomplishment of 2019, the highest credit rating in county history last year. Number two, County Council approved a short-term investment policy that I was able to bring forth to County Council in 2018. That short-term investment policy brought in $124,000 of unfunded revenue, of unfound revenue to Luzerne County. $124,000 came to Luzerne County that we didn't think we had before. We're able to take those funds that we receive in April and invest them into interest-bearing accounts in accordance with the county ordinance. Now, we're able to take those investments and utilize $124,000 extra to have our daily operating costs. The 2020 budget, County Council has set forth $140,000 of revenue. And we were able, we're going to be able to meet that match, I met with Mr. Swetts today. We're going to be able to, we put, we're going to put an RFP out to our banking industry, and hopefully we'll get the best percentage, as we did in 2019. Whoever has the best percentage will get the large amount of the funds, and we'll be able to move forward with that, in the same way we did in 2020. The third thing I wanted to bring out was our EMA, led by Lucy Morgan, was recognized by Pima as the best practice and example for other counties to follow during a statewide grant workshop in Harrisburg. This goes back to some of our county workers. County Council does not see day-to-day operations. County Council, many of you don't come to the courthouse every single day, or weekly or even monthly, to see what happens here in Luzerne County. But I want to say this, is I am honored to work with so many of our County Council, so many of our county employees, because they have made a difference here. Lucy Morgan and her team have now set up an EMA that has been recognized once again by the state as being the best in the state. This follows Fred Rosenkrantz of what he did in 2018, when he received the AppGol Award for that. And the final point of 2019 that I wanted to bring up was our Rockin' the River Concert Series. This concert series that we were able to put on on the Riverfront Park is a free concert series that were provided to the public. We received outside sponsors in order to fund this concert series. The Rockin' the River Concert Series saw over 6,000 people come to our beautiful Luzerne County Riverfront Park, the last piece of county parks and recreation. We're going to do it again this year. We have four scheduled for this year, and we're looking forward to it. Here are some pictures that we put forth. That was a beautiful night, obviously, last year. We saw, I love seeing the kids there, I love seeing the, our seniors there, and everybody in between, and it was a true community event. And if that's an overview shot from a drone, that you'll see the amount of people that came out to, to support this. People in Luzerne County want these events, and I've said this in the past. Luzerne County, some of the people who live here in Luzerne County have a self-esteem problem. Northeastern Pennsylvania does not know how good it truly is to be here in Luzerne County. And these types of events will draw attention to the wonderful things that we have in Luzerne County, and to talk about the diverse, intelligent, impressive individuals that live and work here every single day. We're going to have four this year, starting on July 10th. Mark your calendars now. We haven't booked the bands yet, but it's going to be, it's going to be a great days. And I haven't talked to Teddy Wample yet about the weather, but we're hoping to get some good ones. So, I wanted to bring up this as part of our, as part of our, as part of the State of the County. As I said, we are evolving. I have told you from the first time I sat down as County Manager, there are four pillars of county government. Customer service, financial stability, employee engagement, and processes. Those processes, that pillar, has been specifically addressed in 2019, and we're able to work with our technological advancements in 2019 to truly make a difference. Every single one of these technological advantages that I'm able to go over with you in this report will show that we are now in a position where we will be the envy of other counties. Other counties will be looking to us to see what we are doing differently, to make sure we are running efficiently, and make sure that we are getting the most of our employees, and most importantly, we're providing the necessary level of customer service to our citizens. The first one, obviously a major decision in 2019 by this County Council, the purchase of the new voting machines for the 2020 election. State mandate came down that we had to move to a paper trail machines. Those machines will be in place for the April 2020 election. I want to remind County Council, the way these machines work is you vote on a machine, they print out a piece of paper, that piece of paper is then checked by the voter, and then scanned into a machine. That is the paper verifiable trail that we will need. It's going to be the first time that Luzerne County citizens are looking at this in April of 2020. I would like County Council to remind all of their constituents, and as this goes for the general members of the public as well, a couple of different things. Presidential election, people come out to vote who haven't voted, voted for in some time. Number one, check your poll status. Make sure that we, that a poll hasn't been moved, and you're going to the right place. Number two, the law in Pennsylvania has changed where you don't have to wait at the polls anymore in order to vote. You have the right to have a no-excuse mail-in ballot. The application is currently up on the Luzerne County Bureau of Election website, where any individual can put in a mail-in ballot. This is different than an absentee ballot. You don't have to be sick, you don't have to say, I'm going to be out of the county on that day, or anything along those lines. You can just say, I want the right to mail in. You want to skip a line? That's the way to do it. I would say this, whoever remembers 2016, we have long lines and a big turnout for the presidential elections. I encourage members of the public and members of the, and members of the County Council to impress upon people the ability to have this mail-in ballot that was set forth by our legislator, who finally updated some of our elections law in the past year. The second thing is the purchase of the P-25 Next Generation Public Safety Radio System. This is our 911 system, ladies and gentlemen. We are extremely proud of this. Every single citizen of Luzerne County will be affected by this extremely important decision that this County Council made in 2019. We will now have an up-to-date digital system that will provide clear coverage to every citizen in Luzerne County. When you include the people who commute into Luzerne County every day, our numbers swell from 320,000 people to 500,000 people. Luzerne County is the third-largest county in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in space of land-wise. That means the entire state of Rhode Island fits within Luzerne County. It's up to our Luzerne County 911 to provide service and the needed call, the needed calm, cool, and collected emergency help when that moment arrives, when somebody's in need. This Next Generation Public Safety Radio System will be the next process that Luzerne County citizens will be able to utilize. We are going to be moving forward with this. We have met, I checked with Fred Rosenkrantz today, they have met every single guideline as of date. We are going to be looking at a 2021 Go Live date, still exactly on time, exactly from where we are in the, from our last contract. The third thing I want to bring up, technological advances, something that was implemented, is our texts. People don't understand that you could actually text to 911 as well. Many people, sometimes myself included, don't want to pick up a phone, they'd rather text somebody. Now, you can text 911 and have 911 respond to it. We have 350 texts received by 911 in 2019. We're hoping that that number will increase. Once again, it's a customer service that we are providing to the citizens of Luzerne County. Obviously, in 2019, a major issue, a major discussion that we had was the cyber attack. And what have we done since the cyber attack, before the cyber attack, in order to increase IT security? We've done a large number of things, and I've just highlighted a couple of them here in this, in this slide. Number one, defense, in-depth, an in-depth defense is utilized against all attack vectors, meaning there are multiple, multiple firewalls and multiple areas of defense for every single different way of attacking now in Luzerne County. All virtual servers are subject to regular backups nightly. No remaining physical servers are required backup. Deployed, we also deployed next-gen antivirus software, we deployed improved web filtering, and reviewed all, all firewalls, and actually added an additional firewall here in Luzerne County. Most importantly, I believe we implemented cybersecurity awareness training, so that our employees and the public have an understanding as to how these viruses could be introduced into our system. And we're able to defeat all of them as we move forward. Dan Reese and our GIS crew has done some really great things with our mapping department. They have relocated three services to EMA and retired two other ones. What this does here is it allows GIS mapping to work directly with 911, to provide continuous mapping availability during emergency operations. It's the little things, ladies and gentlemen, that will make a difference. So, this way, a call taker will have up-to-date mapping information right on their screen. Thank you to the hard work of Dan Reese to get these things across. This is the next generation of Luzerne County. This is where we're going with regard to, to the next steps in public safety. Also, GIS was, is going to be able to soon, in the second quarter of 2020, launch a fee-based GIS portal with the new camera data updates that are being received. That way, the public can go online for a small fee and see every single thing that the GIS and camera has. In addition, if those individuals of the public would like to come to the Luzerne County courthouse as well, they're also more than welcome to come to do so as well. Our Drug and Alcohol Team, now led by Ryan Hogan, implemented a statewide Pennsylvania WITS database. If you've talked to anybody in Drug and Alcohol, and Councilman Vogel will tell you this, man, they love acronyms. It's a lot of WITS, and DNA, and SCA, and all that stuff. So, what this does is it allows every single entity who Luzerne County Drug and Alcohol works with to utilize the same software, the same database. This way, we can have every clinical evaluation, treatment, and treatment outcome measures. You have Clinic A, they are doing a good job. They say they're doing a good job, and they provide you with that information. Well, according to all their information, they're doing a great job, but when you compare them to Clinic B and put them on the same level playing field, you'll see that Clinic B is doing the better job, and maybe that's why it has to move forward. In addition, this information will, will tell Luzerne County Drug and Alcohol who is using these types of, of drugs. What type of services do we have to apply? Are they elderly? Are they young? What types of drugs are being introduced into the area? Unfortunately, we continue to fight the opioid epidemic, but there also has been a recent influx of methamphetamine and other things into northeastern Pennsylvania. This system will allow us to do it. We're no longer just making a phone call and saying, hey, what's happening over there? We now have the data to back it up. MHDS has done a similar thing. This is our mental health department with Tara Valet. She has reached out and has a content management platform to add functionality and scalability. Once again, every single MHDS individual will be able to review these things. I'm going to give you a perfect example. An individual gets 302, or put away into a hospital for a suicidal ideation, for their, for their, for their own well-being. That is a reason why the Pennsylvania State Police can withdraw somebody's guns. A lot of times, we get requests from the Pennsylvania State Police in order to provide those documents. Sometimes those documents are years old, have to go back into the records retention, review them. Now, we can specifically review, instantly call up every single document that we have, and provide that to the state police if needed, or say, there's no document regarding that, as well, and that individual can go forth and purchase a firearm if he or she would, she would like to. In addition, I'm working with Sheriff Sumsky on the Sheriff's Camera Project. The sheriff has started an extremely aggressive and large-ranging plan to have every single county facility under the same set of cameras fed to the same server. Those cameras will be provided for the safety of Luzerne County citizens moving forward. I'm a big believer in safety here in Luzerne County, as, as, as I've come up here and said numerous times. County Council has been supportive of changing the security entrance downstairs. As you know, in 2016, we had, actually, 2017, we had a firebombing of our children and youth facility. Those places, every single place, will now have the necessary cameras fed into the same exact server. It's 2020, and are we using, utilizing technology to its fullest extent? The Coroner's Office is going to be utilizing Quincy Tech, and once again, the forensic information management in the Coroner's Office. The Prithontarys in the Quarter of Deeds have done some amazing scanning, and this individual, these individuals will allow people to go back and do research, and look over all these documents for all those amazing years. Prithontary's Office re-indexed 63,000, 63,000 judgment and lien cases, making them fully, fully searchable. This is something that I'm very interested in as well. The Register of Wills put together a Skype capability. There are people who work, who don't work and live in Wilkes-Barre, and it's very difficult for them to come to make a 10-minute hearing with the Register of Wills office. They now have the ability to schedule a Skype hearing with their attorney if they so choose in order to do these things. Once again, customer service. Are we reaching our citizens in Luzerne County where they live? Couple of last things that I want to bring up is from Brian Swetts, our Budget and Finance Director. Purchasing cars, RFP, has been put out there. If we utilize these purchasing cards correctly, and we feel like we will, and this will be a goal for 2020, what we'll have is the ability to recover a percentage from the P-card in order for every payment on those P-cards. It's not actually a credit card, so this will be clear with everybody, but it is a system that's utilized by a bank in order to, to pay the county's bills. Solicitor's Office is working on electronic contract management system. You've heard me talk about this in the past, where contracts pass between building to building, and sometimes take days to get back and forth. We can now review a contract online, and that will be implemented in the next couple of months. Public Defenders has done some really interesting things. Steven Greewald has seen a reduction in bench warrants based upon the UpTrust tech system. What this is, is just a simple tech system that informs a client of his or hers that they have a hearing. You have a hearing coming the next day, and your attorney will meet you there. Unfortunately, these individuals who are charged with crimes often move. They live with their parents, they move out of their parents' house, they lose an apartment, they live with a girlfriend or significant other, get kicked out of that place, and the they lose track of their hearing dates. So, we have now implemented a tech system in order to, in order to get them to court. By doing this, we have lowered bench warrants. The idea behind lowering bench warrants would mean those individuals don't spend two or three days of incarceration in the Luzerne County Correctional Facility, where we are bathing them, feeding them, clothing them, taking care of them if they're sick. And most importantly, the justice system continues to move forward. Eddie O'Neill and his team are doing some very interesting thing with regard to our lights. You'll see new lights on the North Cross Valley, Dundee Gardens Interchange, and the Macon Aqua Bridge, moving to LEDs with regard to those lights, and we'll hopefully, we'll see a, a reduction in our energy costs because of those things. Larry Plech has entered into a robotics roadway program for the evaluation of roadway, roadway services. What this will provide is clear data as to exactly what condition of every county road is, and we'll know exactly which ones need the most attention, so that we can address them moving forward. And the final thing I want to bring up on technological advances is something that Mark Rikovich has been working on for, man, Mark has been, this has been a gargantuan undertaking. The Luzerne County Correctional Facility Body Scanner. We do not have one of these. Many counties in the, in the Commonwealth have started to implement body scanners. So, for those individuals that come into the Luzerne County Facility, they are searched, but unfortunately, sometimes people input contraband somewhere in their body cavity, and that is now introduced into the population. If you recall, in today's paper, you'll see a young lady who brought methamphetamine into the Luzerne County Correctional Facility, and she was arrested and charged, as well as her co-conspirators. This body scanner will hopefully stop most of them. But what we have to do in order to get a body scanner up, you can't just pull one up. You got to go through an incredible amount of steps from the Department of Environmental Protection, you have to get individuals trained, we now have 10 officers that are trained, we now have DEP's letters regarding our certifications, and we are now at the place where we can now finally await DEP's final decision that we're able to implement this. Once we're able to implement this, safety goes a long way. Ladies and gentlemen, correctional facilities, we talked about, is a very dangerous place, could be a dangerous place. This gives us one more tool to protect our corrections officers, as well as the other inmates in there. The five-year plan, we are, believe it or not, at the end of the five-year plan, there are people in this room who were here when the first five-year plan was introduced by my predecessor, Bob Lawton, in PFM, received in October of 2015. The five-year plan where we are at right now, if, as we end the year of 2019, the five-year financial plan is 80% complete. I can say that the five-year plan has led us to success, and we have followed those rules and brought them forth to County Council, and County Council has made the tough decisions in the, in that plan, time and time again, in order to get us in the position where we are. We are now seeking grant funding for the next five-year plan, and we're going to put out an RFP, so that final five-year plan will be received. So, where are we going in 2020? Couple of different things. Number one, the 2020 election. We've talked about this. It's a priority. It has to be done. It will be a major undertaking by Luzerne County with these new machines. I want to be clear to everybody in this room, the 2020 election will not go perfectly. That will be our goal. That was what we will strive for. Like every county in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we are working with new machines for the first time, and we are going to, to try to work with those machines and make sure our public knows exactly where we're at with, with regards to every single step along the way. Number two, the implementation of the 911 digital project. We talked about 911. The third thing, our roads and bridges. We're going to work with our roads and bridges continually, as we have done in the past. We talked about in the last County Council session, the two bridges that we're going to fix in 2021 with the, with the voter reg, I mean, the, the $5 fee, as well as the, the match from the state on that one as well. We're going to continue capital improvements. County Council sets forth a capital budget that we are able to live with every year. We're going to have in a couple of weeks here, we're going to have Evergreen come in to County Council to provide a presentation as to the rest of the first-floor restoration. If you look over this beautiful Luzerne County courthouse, and remember where we were only a couple of years ago. There was a netting over the rotunda, there was smoke damage on the first floor, there were paint, that, paint that was dripping off, the floors were scuffed, the landscaping was falling apart. We now, through the hard work of many of our Luzerne County employees, have made this place something to shine. This building was built in 1909. It's a once-in-a-lifetime building, and we have to maintain it. We can never lose sight of the fact that we are stewards of county facilities, of government facilities, and we have to maintain those matters. I look forward to working with Councilwoman McDermott on excess real estate as we move forward. I identify, when I was County Manager, when my first thing as County Manager was excess real estate, over 400 pieces of property that the county owns that we don't utilize. I think with the hard work of the Real Estate Committee, as well as County Council, their final determination, we'll be able to make a final determination of, as to the excess real estate that we have, including, and I want to put this back on council's radar, the Juvenile Attention Center, the former Juvenile Attention Center. This was closed, we've cleared out the asbestos, it's been cleaned. County Council put out an RFP for that, for that Juvenile Attention Center a couple of years ago. We did not go with the sole bidder, but I want to put it on council's agenda once again to review that. The final thing would be the five-year financial plan. We have to clearly lay out the plans, where we're moving forward in the, in the next five years. So, my four pillars of county government, financial stability, we've paid off over $200 million with the debt. Processes, I've just reviewed all of our processes to tell you how Luzerne County is evolving. Number three, employee engagement. Ladies and gentlemen, we are only as successful as our employee. I'm very proud to be the head of over 1,500 hard-working county employees, spread out over 32 separate departments, helping Luzerne County citizens every single day, because it comes down to the final pillar, customer service. What can we do? We never lose sight that we're here for the taxpayer and because the taxpayer. So, when those individuals come to help, they need help in Luzerne County, can we provide that necessary level of service that they need and they require? So, the rest of the report that are posted online are highlights of the division reports that I have provided to County Council throughout the entire year. And I believe, Mr. McGinnley, you'd like me to answer questions in the work session?
If possible.
So, I'll answer questions in the work session, and I want to thank you for your time and your attention.
Mr. DeLuca, you want to speak to the executive session, please?
Councilman Matt, an executive session from 5:00 PM till, until 5:15 PM this evening. Received a report from the administration on the progress of three different meet-and-discuss groups. No deliberations took place, and no decisions were made.
Thank you. Dilemmas to the voting session agenda? Mr. Griffin?
I would like to move the items from the work session. The resolution for the budget transfer, item number nine, over into the voting session. That's, that was sent in on February the 7th, and I'd like to have that voted on tonight, if we could. And I would like to also move the item number eight from the work session over to the voting session, which is a Solicitor's Opinion on the Board of Elections. Because we have an election coming up so quick, and so, April 28th, I think it's imperative that we vote on that to get an opinion from the Court of Common Please regarding her opinion regarding the person that sits on the election board.
Do you have a second?
I second it.
Both?
Both of them.
We'll take number nine first, that's the one that Mr. Griffin indicated first. Move number nine, which was be the discussion regarding the resolution transfer into 2020, adopted budget funds from account 51016 to for merit raises. All in favor of that moving over to the agenda, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Yes? Any abstentions? None heard, that's moved over. Discussion regarding the resolution for declaratory statement from the Court of Common Pleas regarding Luzerne County Home Rule Charter, section 8.04, Board of Elections and Registrations, moving that over to the voting session. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. They will now be moved to the voting session. They will be eight and nine on the voting session under county council. We'll leave them the same numbers that they are on the voting session, so that we shouldn't have any issues.
I also would like to delete number four from the agenda, which is the motion to adopt resolution approving the sales of certain parcels of property held in repository. There's some issues with the real estate tax law that says we're supposed to get written notification that the taxing districts and taxing bodies approve that. I don't see that in my packet. I also have an issue with the ability for us to put the property liens on the people for the act taxes.
So you want to delete it from the voting session? That's your motion?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Who was that? Mr. Urban? Mr. Griffith would like to delete, and seconded by Mr. Urban, motion to adopt the resolution approving the sales of certain parcels, property held in repository by Northeast Revenue Services LLC, acting as Luzerne County Tax Claim Bureau. All in favor of deleting that, indicate by saying aye.
I'd like to make an amendment on that, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Could we move that to the work session? I think we need to ferret some of that stuff out, some of the policies with that.
It was on the work session two weeks ago, but we certainly can move it back.
Yeah, if we can put it back there, I'd appreciate it, then we can discuss that.
Well, I think the first thing is we remove it from the voting session agenda, then you can make a motion to move it to the work session agenda. Okay? One at a time. All in favor of removing it from the voting session agenda, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. It's removed. Now, Mr. Haas?
I'll make the motion to return that to the work session.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Mr. Haas, and seconded by Mr. Griffith, to move it to the work session agenda. All in favor of moving to the work session agenda, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. It's moved.
I just have one more quick question. Mr. Pedri, where's the state of the county report on the internet?
It's not up yet, it'll be tomorrow.
Oh, it's not up yet? Okay. I thought you said it was up there.
No, it'll be up there.
We have a motion to adopt the voting session agenda with the amendments that have just been made.
So moved.
Mr. Vogt, do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. Public comment on voting session agenda items with the items that have been amended? Mr. Pacley, in that?
Pauline.
Excuse me?
Pauline.
Paul?
Pauline.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have some concerns tonight regarding the five-dollar truck and car fee that was imposed in Luzerne County. My question is this, you're saying that the money's going to go for the roads and the bridges in Luzerne County? Now, from what I understand, we collected, what, a million and a half dollars in registration fees in Luzerne County? And another thing I want to bring up, there was $700,000 spent in the development up in Mountain Top from that money? Is that correct? Mr. Pedri?
Well, wait, you've addressed your questions here.
I'm sorry, sir.
No problem, no problem. After you're finished, then we'll answer your questions.
Okay, all right, thank you. But the thing is that we collected a million and a half dollars, and from what I understand, $700,000 was put into a road in the development up in Mountain Top? Now, I'm a little confused. That money should go for the roads and the bridges in Luzerne County for what Mr. Pedri said tonight when he made that slide presentation, okay? Now, isn't there a timeframe? Once we collect X amount of dollars, a million and a half to two million, that pinned out would match that money? And they would match whatever money we raised for the roads and bridges? Am I correct, Mr. McGinley?
Yeah, but when you're finished, I'll try to answer your questions for you.
All right, thank you.
If we can, all at once.
All right. But here's my concern, is that we're spending $700,000 into a industrial road, and that money should go to the needed repairs for all the bridges in Luzerne County and the roads in there, not in the development. And then from what I understand, is that developer wants the county to take over the road. I don't get this. I mean, we're paying five-dollar fees to cover the roads and bridges in Luzerne County. Now, if this is the way the money's going to go, well, you know what? I don't think we should impose a five-dollar fee permanently in Luzerne County. We have to watch this money, where it's going. I'm concerned about that. That's all I have to say.
Okay, let me try to answer your questions one at a time, okay? If you were here when Mr. Pedri made his presentation a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago, that road is part of Luzerne County road system. We own that road.
It's in a development, right.
It's in an industrial park.
Industrial park.
Yeah, but we own that road. Years ago, previous administrations, previous commissioners have taken over that road and became part of the county.
But isn't it up to the developer, once the county acquires to maintain, put the road in, or where the funding's going towards the road, isn't it up to him that he takes over the road after that?
This was something that was done years ago.
Yeah, but we're spending $700,000.
I understand that, sir.
On one piece of road.
I understand that. There is a match available through the state for $2 million. The match is only available for bridges. So in order for us to be able to get that match, we have to sign $2 million that would be used for bridges. So, you're correct, and I think we collected about $1.4 million.
Now, wasn't this money put in the general fund? From what I understand, it was put in-
No, it's not in the general fund.
Was it put into a grant, so none of you guys would see this?
It's not in general fund. It has to be in a separate account required by the state in order to be eligible for those grants.
Okay. And one other thing that I'd like to say is that, if you guys are voting on this tonight, you know what? I think taxation on taxation, the people in Luzerne County have been taxed so heavily, you know what? You need more accountability where this money is going to go for the roads. And I'm not saying they're not doing a bad job, but what I'm saying is, if we're going to charge each household or each person that has a car in Luzerne County a five-dollar fee, there must be more accountability to it. And that's all I have to say.
I thank you. Mr. Rabo?
Good evening. I'm here to comment on the five-dollar registration fee. I have sent members of council and county manager with respect to what was said about the five-dollar, not the five-dollar fee, but the funding for bridges and roads by the state with regards to Act 89 Transportation Fund since it was implemented. We know that according to the Auditor General, from his audit, 4.2 billion has been diverted from that Act 89 Transportation Fund to fund the Pennsylvania State Police for their pensions and other overtime costs relating to areas that don't have their own local law enforcement. Now, this year, the state has passed, in July of 2020, gave $750 million from that Act 89 Transportation Fund to the Pennsylvania State Police. Now, according, for 2021, the proposal from Governor Wolf for 2021 is between 550 and 600 million to go to the Pennsylvania State Police. Now, I've also sent, in that email, it says $2.1 billion because of what happened with all these giveaways to the state police could be used for funding roads and bridges. Now, $2.1 billion could go to the 67 counties, including this one, for our roads and bridges. Why isn't it? I mean, we have a state representative who's the minority chair of the House Transportation Committee who can make it happen, but will he do something about it? Why hasn't anybody asked him? I don't know. That boggles my mind, because when he was here a few years ago, when the legislative roundtable discussion by the Legislative Committee for this county, he said that, "We gave you the means of charging a five-dollar fee, and why didn't you enact it?" So then, the majority of council at the time said, "Yeah, let's enact it," but Governor Wolf threw in a nice little surprise to throw in the $2 million match, which was only a one-time-off thing, which was from federal DOT money from the transportation bill from years past, I think it was 2016 or 17, one of those years. So now, once this $2 million match comes for the roads and bridge for the county, that's it. There's no more additional $2 million matches. So, I agree wholeheartedly with Councilman Urban's expiration to pass for the five-dollar fee, because it's an only one-time-off thing, and there was, as Mr. Schnee put in his sunset clause for that, when the five-dollar fee passed, I think that should be allowed to happen, because that's all that's going to happen.
Mr. Rabo?
I'm finishing up. I think that the state and county manager, you guys should give authorization to Manager Pedri to seek the lobbyist to get full funding for the county roads and bridges through the Act 89 Transportation Fund money, instead of giving it away to the state police. Thank you.
Mr. Matta?
Yeah, I'm not here to talk about rain tax. But eventually, I will mention it. From what I understand, from the last couple of council meetings that I came to, this five-dollar fee was supposed to be for matching funds. And from what I heard today, that it's supposed to have been put into a separate fund. Am I correct? I'll wait for the answer. That's one question. The next question is, if it was put into a fund for strictly bridges, why would this been for something else besides bridges? So, that was a misappropriation of funds in my eyes, because it was spent on roads. Not that the roads didn't need it. I live in the Back Mountain, and Chase Road really looks nice. It's drivable, very much so. Before, it was not drivable, it was almost back to dirt. So if Mr. Rabo is right in what he said about funding, why aren't we after that funding instead of putting another tax on people? "Oh, it's only five dollars." "Well, it's only $60 for the rainwater fee, and it's only $10 for this and $10 for that." How many $10 and $5 are they going to be able to take out of our pockets to pay for all this? That's another question. Calm down. All right. So, if roads and bridges need to be fixed, don't we have a department in the county to fix roads and bridges? Or does that work all have to be formed out? And if it has to be formed out, where are we getting the money to pay for that? If we don't go after people that have money there for us, instead of going after the taxpayers of our 67 municipalities or boroughs in this county? And am I timed up yet?
I'm not sure.
Pretty close.
Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds. And the last question I have is about the validity of Mr. Vito to sit on that, on a board to address all you people, and how can he sit on the same board for county council as for the county? Unless I'm confused about that. Issues?
Okay. Mr. DeLuca is the solicitor?
For?
For our council. He's here at our meetings.
Okay. So, as a solicitor for the county council, how could he defend any one of the people on the council?
He may defend, I'm not sure what you're-
Well, so, if we have a situation where we're going to put a, oh, I gotta say it. We're going to put an injunction against the sanitary authority.
Well, that, yeah.
It's a different situation.
That's a different situation that'd be handled by, through the Solicitor's Office.
It would be handled by the county solicitor?
Through the Solicitor's Office, the Office of Law.
Oh, the Office of Law, okay.
And as far as the money was put in a separate account, that's required by the state. The money was to be used for road and bridges.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Excuse me. But the only match was for bridges.
Oh.
That was specified by the state.
Okay. So then, it was allowed to be used for roads, then?
Yes, roads and bridges, but the only time we can get a match is when it's used for bridges. Okay? That's state requirement.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Knapp?
Good evening, my name is Ron Knapp. I reside at 213 West Noble Street in Nanicoke, Apartment B. I'm here to state my concerns about the five-dollar fee, or registration fee that is imposed on Luzerne County residents and the vehicles they drive. I feel it is something that isn't necessary. My perspective on this is it's a nickel-and-dime issue, and if I had a car that continued to cause me to keep putting these small increments into it, I would eventually swap it out or something that is more, on something that is more dependable. After a while, the small increments start to add up. I appreciate your position in that the money the taxpayers pay you as council members pays for the fees and taxes you are subject to pay, as we taxpayers must come up with it in any other means necessary. I'm here speaking in defense for the elderly that end up being forced from their homes because of these nickel-and-dime tactics that, yes, do add up, especially when living on a budget that gets you from paycheck to paycheck. Elderly are being forced from their homes at the expense of mismanagement of resources being brought in. I wanted to ask the manager or state about the state of the county as regards to what was just brought to us about the state of the county and the budget. I thought it was important that we did note that with the $124,000 that was invested in the stock market or investments, the bustling stock market did help out in bringing, I'm sure, that the A-minus credit score towards that. I think that that's important, that we realize that, that that was a big help, as it stands. And I'll be back later regards to, before the vote, for the limitation of the five-dollar tax fee, if that's okay?
You won't be back?
We won't be back?
No, this is-
Oh, I'm going to continue then.
Yeah, you have an opportunity prior to getting to the voting session.
Now, I have to mention, a person in a gym I am a member at came up to me because he knows my position on a lot of things, because people discuss the matters that affect them. And the five-dollar fee is one of them. He stated to me, "Aren't you concerned about how your children will be affected with finding jobs, good jobs in the area, when you confront people with power as you on council have?" I say, "I would rather my children scratch and claw their way through life and earn their keep honestly than follow most politicians today, who think it's okay to increase taxes and fees to the point that the elderly in the community have to make the choice of not paying them or go without their medication to stay alive." This is the circumstance that they're in. In other words, to live a life of hell on earth, to reach the heavenly realm after they have passed, than to find themselves in hell after their passing. Excuse me for being blunt, but this is nothing short of a dictatorship, that reallocation of funds.
Now you've reached your time limit.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who had not submitted a comment sheet? Mr. Shiner, you want to go first? Mr. Shiner, you wanna go first?
I was opposed to this $5 vehicle fee in 2008 when it was implemented and today I'm still opposed to it. But I'm not exactly in favor of the ordinance before you either. In 2019, we took in $1.1 million through this. $800,000 was used on roads, $300,000 was applied towards bridges. We still need to come up with $2 million total, another $1.7 million, to achieve the matching grant from PennDOT. It's estimated that we'll take in about $1.4 million this year. And I think, instead of ending this, which I think it has to, but instead of ending it in 2020, as the ordinance says, I think the date should be changed to 2021. And make the requirement that all the money that's taken in using the $5 vehicle fee be applied towards bridges and bridges only. At that point, we will have $2.1 million accumulated between last year, this year, and 2021, exceeding the amount needed. And at that point, then the fee needs to go away. I don't see any point in ending it now and shortchanging ourselves, not being able to get the two, the full $2 million from the state or having to come up with it from the general fund or some other means to make that match. I'm against the fee. I was against the fee and I still am, but it's there. And I think it's up to this council to make sure that it's used for bridges, bridges only. Let it continue through 2021 so we get the money and not burden any other of our accounts within this county, the general fund or the public in any other way. And let it go with that. Thank you.
Mr. Stash is? I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Come to the podium, please. Would you give us your first name, Mr. Dwyer?
Hi, my name is Brian Dwyer. I'm from the borough of Larksville in the county. Again, I'd like to thank all the previous speakers for some of their eloquent points. I'm not here to bash anybody over where the money went. That's over and done with. It happened. So did this fee. It's over and done with. It happened. This gentleman makes some very valid points and I can't say that I necessarily disagree with him, but it, it's gotta stop. I mean, he does have a valid point, but we did raise that money. It got spent on other things. Again, I'm not bashing anybody over that. It happened, it's over with, it's done. I, I'm just here to say that the fee needs to stop. The fee had a sunset clause put in it and I think we need to follow that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newman?
Good evening. John Newman, Annecote, Pennsylvania. Mixed emotions about the, the tax. Kinda agree with what Brian said. You know, perhaps a revised sunset of the law might be, or the ordinance might be in effect. But I'm here to say that sometimes it's easy to criticize if you haven't walked in the shoes of an executive that has to make a decision when an opportunity becomes available and the resources not, may not be there to take advantage of it. And I believe that was the case in the, correct me if I'm wrong, the Honey Hole Road in Butler Township. Anytime you have an opportunity to take over some 11 miles of road by a municipality, simply under the guise of, "If you fix it, we'll take it over." Now, that's a long-term investment or a long-term cost avoidance for the county. And I don't think the executive should be criticized for making that decision, even though he went out of the box. And, yeah, it might've, it might've cost some matching money. And I will say this, anytime you can get matching money, you should do it. Now, as far as the Crestwood Industrial Park, you know, our former leaders did hang us with some, some situations that we just have to deal with. But, the people in the Crestwood Industrial Park pay taxes. There's a lot of jobs up there. I'm sure the buildings, the employers pay a good amount of tax. And maybe we should've take, should take care of their road. Maybe we could've pushed it back. But my point is, a sunset on the, on the ordinance would be in order. And don't Chris, don't criticize the executive for making a good, solid decision on the road in Butler Township. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda items.
Jason Carr, Sellersburg, Pennsylvania. I think we all know today that the, there's going to be six votes that are going to extend the $5 fee, at least until the, the match is made. I think I get the sense today inside the room that the public is beginning to lose confidence in Mr. Pedri over this fee. The questions that I have regarding the original $700,000 is, were you contacted by Mr. McGinley or Mr. Pedri? Were you contacted by Mr. Miracle to have that road paved? And if not, how did you arrive to that conclusion to single out that road throughout the entire county? Why was that specific road targeted, which costs $700,000, which is causing the fee to be extended because the funds were not appropriated towards bridges? It's very disappointing that we continue to be taxed, hardworking people that sit here, and the special interests benefit. Mr. Miracle is one of the richest people in Loseran County and he was able to take advantage of having a road paved while at the same time receive a tax break in 2019, $1.2 million from this same council, while the citizens of Loseran County continue to struggle to pay these nonsensical fees. The registration tax, the auto-registration tax does have a valid point. But you've pushed the public to the limit with the fees, thus causing it to actually have to end. So, if you could answer those questions, I'd greatly appreciate it.
As far as I'm aware, I was not contacted by anyone, I don't...
No, I wasn't contacted by anybody. The reason why that road was picked, it's over 1,000 people work on Elwood Avenue. I would encourage everybody who has concerns about Elwood Avenue, to talk to people who work on Elwood Avenue. 1,000 people working on Elwood Avenue every single day. I could show you the emails from the businesses. Couple emails reached out to me, told me that trucks have caused $5,000 worth of damage to their trucks, in addition to over hundreds of dollars to every single employee's vehicle for hitting our, the potholes on that road. We have nu, we have 128 miles of road. That specific road was identified by our engineers department as something that we can fix for those amount of funds. If you would look at the original ordinance that was passed by the Loseran County Council, it in no way, shape, or form stated that only the funds should be utilized on bridges. We had to make a decision for this specific road, for $700,000. If you talk to any of the 1,000 people who work on that road, they're very pleased that that worked. But nobody reached out to me, Mr., from Mr. Miracle's organization, in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. Moving on to agenda items.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
The agenda should say the minutes are next? Not old business? The agenda should reflect minutes are next, correct?
Minutes are next.
Says old business, right? On our agenda?
Yep, but we have nothing listed there.
But, by law, it says that old business is after minutes on the agenda.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
I do have old business too.
Well, let's get to the minutes first. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from February 11th?
Motion to move a minutes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas?
Gratitude to the clerk for doing a whole lot of work. It was a lot of...
Who, we have second?
A lot of things to deal with.
Second.
Ms. Sedman? On the question?
Mr. McGinley, I'd like to amend the minutes to reflect the verbatim minutes regarding the opinion of the solicitor. I sent an email to you about, a couple days back about that and I would like that put in the minutes verbatim of what the opinion was of the solicitor at that meeting. So I would like to have that, just that section of our meeting where the solicitor gave an opinion regarding the Board of Elections' appointment.
Do we have a motion for that amendment? Mr. Griffith? Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith for that amendment?
Second.
Second who? Mr. Urban? Now, we've always had our minutes showing the actions of council, correct?
But we have a, we also have a motion on the...
You have a motion.
But, I mean, we have a, a quest, a item for vote that requires that decision or opinion to go upstairs to the Court of Appeals.
And that, we can bring that in at that time.
And I think that that would be helpful for that process.
So we have amendment, Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Urban to add that section dealing with the solicitor's opinion regarding the election board candidates. All in favor indicate by raising your hand. Four? Any in opposition? Seven? Okay, amendment fails. We have a motion to approve the minutes, by Mr. Haas, second by Ms. Sedman. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No.
Mr. Urban and Mr. Griffith? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Going down to number two, motion to adopt the resolution approving the settlement pending litigation in the Brizzy versus Loseran County Children and Youth Services.
Old business, Mr. McGinley, please.
Yes, go ahead. Sorry.
Old business. Mr. Pedri stated it's about customer service. I've been bringing up about campaign finance reports. Would like to know when the manager's gonna have the Board of, Bureau of Elections start processing those campaign finance reports, putting them online after, I think it's been about six years now we've been asking for that, since Mr. Piazza left, I believe it was. Also, the, also under old business, I have ACE Committee Chairman coming to the meeting. I've asked about that at probably two meetings now. We need to have the ACE Commission Chairman come and give an annual report. Haven't had one of that to council in over two years.
I, I think they sent us one last year, Mr. Griffith.
He's supposed to come in person and give a report.
I didn't say that. I said, "I think they sent one last year."
Codification of the ordinances and resolutions, that hasn't been done yet. Would like to see that. Keep that, I'll keep bringing these under old business.
Mrs. Lawrence has that, as her project.
What's the reason for the oath of offices last week that Mr. Urban brought up that were filed incorrectly? The training recording for New World? There was four of us that attended training sessions for New World downstairs in the meeting room. That was a recorded training session. I've asked several times for that recording, haven't received it.
And I asked Mr. Swetz to check with the vendor to make sure that's a permissible action on our part.
And the vendor approved that before we recorded it, did he not?
Oh, I, I asked Mr. Swetz to check on that.
Mr. Swetz was in the room? Correct, Mr. Swetz, if he's here?
To record it, but not to send it out.
So he gave permission to record it, but we gotta get permission to send it out?
Yes.
Wow, okay. I also asked about the $34 million bond location in New World last week. We were told Mr. Swetz was not here.
Mr. Swetz will be up in the work session and that's an area that you can address at that time.
Okay, that's all I have under old business. Thank you.
Okay. And the, if you send me that information, I'll have that information forwarded.
What information's that, Mr. McGinley?
The ones you requested. Campaign reports, et cetera. Okay?
Well, we have it recorded. The secretary's taking care of it.
Yeah, but if you can send it to me, I'll have that...
Will you answer me?
Well, I, no, I won't, but the people who are responsible for that, I'll have to answer.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Walter, is what you want on the campaign finance, what you're talking about, you're talking about putting the, the form on electronics so that we can fill it out, our treasurer can fill it out?
No, the campaign finance reports that are filed should be online, so we can get them online. Anybody can view it?
So you can view them?
No.
So you can view them?
Well, you know, the state legislators have the actual form online, so your treasurer can fill it in right there and then it goes right to the Secretary of State, so, the treasurer's office, so, that's a convenience, I, I find, that would, if you're gonna talk about campaign finance reports, to be able to fill them out online.
No, I, my, my question is that campaign finance reports that have been filed in the Bureau of Elections should be posted online for anybody to see. They were always posted and then when Lenny Piazza left the county, they were all taken down. And we were told that we were gonna hire another person for that department, so that could all be taken care of and get them back up online, and it has not happened. So, it's very convenient for somebody to look for a campaign finance report rather than drive into Penn Place and ask the staff to pull those reports. If they're online, we could just see them online.
Okay. Number two, motion to adopt the resolution approving the settlement pending litigation in the Brizzy versus Loseran County Children and Youth Services. Do we have a motion?
Present.
Mr. Steve, Ms. Sedman? On the question?
Are, is, are we gonna give any amounts to the public?
It's in your resolution.
It's in the resolution and it's...
Oh, it's in the detail. You're, you're right, I'm sorry.
The settlement amount is $35,000. The deductible on this insurance policy is $10,000. Out of that $10,000, only $2,000 will come from the general fund.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Thank you. Motion for number three, to adopt the resolution approving the settlement pending litigation in the matter of the state of Tricia Cooper versus Loseran County Correctional Facility. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Ms. Radel seconds it. On the question?
This is a litigation that was brought against Loseran County and Correct Care Solutions. The total settlement amount with the two defendants is $110,000. Of that $110,000, Loseran County will be paying $55,000. This deductible on this policy is $50,000. That will come out of the general fund, out of my special litigation fund.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four was removed from the agenda. Number five, motion to adopt the resolution and knowledge of the appointment of a member of the county retirement system to the retirement board. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Ms. Radel, who have a second? Mr. Urban? On the question? Roll call?
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Vinoos?
Thank you. Number six, motion to introduce an ordinance creating the County Cares Commission. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Radel and Mr. Vog. This would be the first reading of an ordinance. It would be an introduction. We need four votes in order to introduce that. And you'll note on your work session that we also have a place on the work session for this discussion later. Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
No.
Very good. Number seven, motion to adopt the ordinance, amended Loseran County ordinance, 2018-04, implementing the implication of a fee for local use as provided for by 76 PA CS 1935. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Some move. Second, Mr. Perry. I have an amendment. I'd like to change that date, uh-
Wait a minute. Mr. Urban, you originally introduced a, uh-
You know, for legality purposes, not to repeal the previous one because that would probably, you know, we, we had question on possibly jeopardizing funding, so not to repeal it, but to sunset it, which is a difference. So taking it away versus letting it go after collecting, uh, two years' worth of funds. So that's, and I had put the date in for the end of this year. The reason is, is that, you know, by extending it a year out is giving a manager a pass, you know, at spending unbudgeted money, um, in the past. You know, the money came in, we knew about it six months in advance, or previous county council should've known about it. Management failed to put it in the 2019 budget. Council failed to put it in the budget, therefore that money should've just sat in the account prior to being expended unless it came to council for approval. Because I think, you know, if you go back into the charter, it does state that money's being spent in a future year, over $25,000 has to come for council approval, which was not done. So, quite honestly, even though it was, that 725 was, or 725K was spent on a road, you know, really, but, yes, maybe that road needed to be fixed, but that's immaterial. Um, you know, previous county council should've been notified, um, and, and quite honestly, in, in my opinion, that, to me, constitutes a misappropriation of, of funds. By allowing this, this fee to continue, like I said, it is giving management a pass on this, saying, "Okay, you could do this," and there's no repercussions. The same time, you know, you can continuously give out half a million dollar raises in one department or another over the course of a year. Um, I think, you know, you need to tighten your belts up a little bit. Uh, I think we should end the fee, and we'll find the $600,000 somewhere else in the budget, uh, going forward.
Mr. Urban, your motion is to amend your original-
My, my motion is to amend the previous-
So the one that's marked revised is the amendment?
Correct, it's gonna be revised.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Haas, that's your second? Okay? Okay, Mr. Schnee had an amendment?
Yes, I'd like to move that date to 12/31/21.
12/31/21.
As Mr. Shiner said, uh, from the beginning, and I agree with him wholeheartedly, that w, we gotta get that money, that's matching money. And going back, uh, to the beginning here, I mean, from the manager's presentation, I mean, yes, we took over $200 million since Home Rule, uh, took over, and, and that's the work of, uh, 11 members. We might disagree and stuff like that, but they're the facts that we took $200 million over. Two weeks ago, I stated, when I opposed the rain tax, I come from a family that live week to week. But when somebody's presenting me that I'm getting $5, and they're matching $5, and I have $10 to do the work instead of $5. And I'm not one here to sit here and kick the can down the road and not address them. Going back, I, I have no idea where that, that road is in Crescent. I could speak for the road on Foothills Drive, I traveled that, I came down there one time, there was an old timer with a pickup truck throwing dirt in the holes, like the whole road was a mess. I called Mr. Pedri that time, he sent a crew down to do patching on it. Couple of weeks later, this is in the process where this road was being bid out for, for work to be done, and, uh, another guy was down there with orange fluorescent paint. I, and I stopped, and I called Mr. Pedri again, that these holes had to be done again. On, on the report from the other week, uh, with all the bridges we have, this is a small step forward. And, and I totally agree, when it first came here, it was a $5 fee with no match. I would not vote for that, that's why it never came to the table. But when somebody, I have $5, and somebody's giving me $5, and I could move this county forward a little bit, I, I don't, I don't see how you can't go after that money.
It's all taxpayer money.
Excuse me, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee's amendment?
Second.
Ms. Radel? On that, questions for that amendment? Moving the date to 12/31/21.
On the question, this was specifically what I asked the gentleman from PennDOT about, and what he said, if you recall, was that we needed to take in $2 million from that fee, and we estimate that by December 31st of 2020, we will have taken in 2.4 million dollars from that fee. And he also said that we need to allocate $2 million for bridges. It doesn't necessarily need to be the same money, you just need to have allocated $2 million for bridges, which we have done. He actually said that at that meeting. He pointed to two bridge projects that are in the, in the process, that are allocated for $2 million. So by December 31st of 2020, we will have collected enough money to get that match, and we have allocated enough money to get that match. There is no need to continue that fee for another year and collect another 1.4 million dollars, because we will have met all of the requirements by December 31st of 2020. So I'm gonna vote against that amendment.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Griffith?
I'm gonna vote against the amendment as well. We have just given the tax, the taxpayers have just given over a quarter of a million dollar merit increases to employees of the county. We, we've turned around and we've just settled lawsuits for thousands and thousands of dollars. We've, we've done, uh, if it's, if it's the issue about the roads with the pothole, we could fill potholes, if that's what it took to fix that road was a pothole. We didn't need to spend $700,000 to fix a road, that we could've used to get the matching funds. It's, it's time that we stop allowing the taxpayers to have their pockets picked by this council and by this manager. He had an obligation to, when he, when we approved this in May, he knew full well that that money was allocated for bridges, full well. That was, that was the, that was actually the reason why it passed, and that's exactly why Mr. Schnee made the amendment, was because it was supposed to go to bridges. Now, if he wants to use it for other things, I don't care what the priority was. He certainly had an obligation to come to council and say, "There's a priority, we have a road in the industrial park that needs fixed, we've patched the potholes several times, it hasn't been done, I wanna take the money that we allocated for bridges and use it for roads." That didn't happen. I think the manager needs to be accountable. If he has to lay people off to get the money, then lay people off to get the money. His job is to manage this council, county. That's his job. And he's supposed to out, manage the county on the money that the council gives him. That was not budgeted money. It was just put in a pot and taken out as, at the end of your budget report. The money was put into a general fund, or into the, yeah, into the general fund, the 100 fund, and it was allocated in Act 89, uh, fund account, which clearly, in May, they knew, full well, management knew that that money was supposed to go in a separate account. That was part of the law. That was part of the, um, the Act 75 law that allowed the fee in the first place. And it was very specific that said that money had to be put in a separate account. How it ended up in Act 89, well, maybe we need to talk to the manager about how his staff is operating, and why do we give merit raises to the staff if they can't put the money in the right account. But clearly, I think that the taxpayers need to get the fee taken away. It needs to go away at the end of the year, and, uh, you know, if we, if we lose the $2 million match, then maybe we need to hold the manager accountable for that, not hold the taxpayers accountable for giving them extra money.
So, I don't know with the East County Road in Hollenbach Township, that's not gonna be complete until 2021. Does that matter if the road is not complete, that that money didn't-
I'm gonna have to defer to Mr. O'Neil on that.
Can we get a mic so we could hear you back here, please?
Me? I was trying.
I'm gonna have to defer to Mr. O'Neil.
So, that, that's a question. I know you're saying, like, yes, with the West Liberty Road in Hanover Township, East County Road in Hollenbach Township, those both will exceed $2 million. But if that East County Road Bridge is not gonna be complete until 2021, does that mean that that $2 million is totally collected by this December?
We still have to collect the $2 million from the $5 fee to allocate towards those two bridges. So we can have the money, and the bridges don't have to be complete, but we have to have the $2 million collected in addition to the $700,000 that we've already spent.
That is not what he said. That is not what he said, because I was very specific when I asked him about that. I said, "Does it have to be the same money that was collected from that vehicle fee?" I said, "Do we have to allocate the $2 million, $2 million of what was collected from our money for those bridges?" And he said, "No, it does not." He said, "You just have to have that allocation." I understand that you have a hole now in, in filling where, where that money is gonna come from, from that project, but the gentleman did not say that you have to collect enough money from that fee and allocate it for the bridges. He said, "You have to collect $2 million, and you have to allocate $2 million." It does not have to be the same $2 million.
You, you're correct.
Thank you.
You are correct. So if we can find the money from our general fund, which we don't currently budget or have not budgeted-
Well, that'll be in the 2021 budget.
Okay. If, if we take it from the general fund, that's correct, that would be an option.
Right.
So the only way that we get the money right now is from the Act 89 and the Act 40, that's where we get the money to be able to do bridges, and that comes to about a million dollars a year, you said?
There's Act 44, Act 13, and Act 89. There are three funds that collectively, um, yield just under a million dollars annually in revenue for bridges, and it's exclusive for bridges only.
And collecting, or if we do continue it until 2021, the bridge that will be fixed is the Hillside Road and Kingston Township Bridge.
That's correct.
That will be what we need to do with the $2 million allocation from the state.
Yeah, the agreement that we have was for the completion of, uh, East, West Liberty and Hollenbach, and in order to do that, that's the commitment we've made, and in exchange for that, we will get the match for the Hillside Road Bridge. That's correct.
Anyone else? Mr. Haas?
Yeah. We look at this issue, I know what Mrs. Hough says is exactly right, as long as the taxpayers won't get penalized, this, this needs to come to an end, and it seems like what the gentleman from PennDOT said, that's not gonna happen. So to vote to postpone giving tax relief to the people, I think is the wrong decision at this point. If you remember the last meeting, we had that matrix of all the roads and bridges in the county, which, which the management provide, I really enjoyed that, and y'all noticed that there was a disproportionate amount of bridges specifically from 1924. So, um, I did some research, I talked to a gentleman named Gary Clark, and I don't think he's watching, but, um, he used to work for PennDOT, and this was under the tenure of Governor Gifford Pinchot. A, a lot of folks around here in the Northeast know he's from the Northeast, up in Pike County, and he was governor from 1923 to 1927, and then also for, I skipped a term and then came back for four years in 1930 to 31. So, um, it, there's even a, a road placard that says, "A lot of the infrastructure was done to, first of all, provide unemployment relief, and then quote, 'Get the farmers out of the mud.'" Okay, so, we're in a different kind of mud today, because we've got a, a lot of bridges to meet. I wish we kept the map up here on the wall, because it's very telling, and I said this last meeting, and I, I really hope the, the media covers this, that we cannot get out of this proverbial mud with our shoestring budget we have here in Luzerne County. We need the help of the state, we need that gas tax that we all pay every time we go to the pump to be allocated to the correct place, and that is to fix our roads and bridges, whether or not the state owns them or the counties own them, because the state got us out of the mud and then into the mud in a different sort of way, by having to maintain all this infrastructure. So we really need the politicians in Harrisburg and in Washington to come and aid us, the taxpayers can't handle this. And I said last time, and a lot of folks here agree with me, we can't keep on taking $5 from the people every year to fix the 300 or so, um, the 200 so, 300, 300 bridges, I think.
302.
300 and 120 some miles of roads. We'll never get it done. It's, it's just not gonna happen. So we need the, the officials in Harrisburg to truly put their heads together to allocate, talk about, Steve, you're talking about malfeasance. That money went to the wrong place, at least a big portion of it, it really needs to go to the right place. And I think that's what's the issue here, and this is what, what the people are crying out, that's why we have people here tonight at the meeting, to talk about this. So, um, you know, we'll continue to go to bat for this at the Legislative Committee, but we can do them a real service by voting this, voting this away like Steve introduced tonight, and getting rid of this.
Anyone else?
My, my question to you, Mr. Haas, would be, when is the state gonna come forward? They just threw a mandate of $20 million on us for voting machines and came up with nothing.
Well, they came up with, with 60%. I think 60% of helping our roads and bridges out would be a hot, a whole lot more than a, a measly $5 match, which is what they've, they've come up with.
As Mr. Urban Senior, I mean, they're only used two times a year, those machines. Was it really mandated that we-
Bob, nobody's gone against that more than myself on this council.
And I totally agree.
I spoke about that for, for years. I spoke against that.
I totally agree with that, Perry.
Well, then why?
But you're telling me they're gonna come forward. They haven't come forward.
We, on behalf of the people, need to go forward and take these issues to Harrisburg and Washington.
I mean, when are they gonna come forward?
Okay, I think we've had a lot of discussion. Anyone else? We have an amendment by Mr. Schnee, second by Ms. Radel, to change the date on the ordinance to 12/31/21. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Haas?
For the amendment, no.
Ms. Hough?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Seven yes, four no.
You did. You did. We're gonna vote on it now. So now we'll vote on the ordinance with the new termination date of 12/31/21. On the question, we have a second, first by Mr. Urban, second by Mr. Haas. Roll call, please.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vogt?[1605.41] Mr. Griffith?
Disappointingly, yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you.
Ten yes, one no.
Very good. Or go to use your work session agenda items, please. Number eight is resolution to seek a declaratory statement from the Court of Common Pleas regarding Luzerne County Home Rule Charter, Section 8.04, Board of Elections and Registration, Page 89 and 90 on your agenda for the voting session, for the work session. Do we have a motion? Mr. Griffith, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Urban, on the question.
Is this to direct who to file a declaratory judgment? Do you know? I read the resolution.
You read the resolution. 89, Page 89 and 90. To seek a declaratory statement, yes. That's what it says.
Right, and we, I took a look at this. We wouldn't qualify. I don't know who, if we would have standing to request.
Mr. Griffith submitted this.
There's a declaratory judgments act that requires that there be an issue that's ripe for, right to appear before the court. I don't think the situation as described in the resolution qualifies for that type of action. We're not allowed to ask any court for prospective advice on how to proceed in the future. And regarding this specific action, if counsel is the one that would be requesting the declaratory judgment, there is no controversy at this point because counsel had, had voted to approve the member. So from counsel's point of view, there is no, there is no conflict. So this situation would not qualify for something that, to seek a declaratory judgment.
So, so what, what action would we ask the Court of Common Pleas to do regarding an opinion from the solicitor that is, in my opinion, speaking for myself, is contrary to the understanding of the charter? Because it's only an opinion, and we were told that if we disagree with an opinion, we can ask the Court of Common Pleas. So how do we do that?
First of all, this was a situation where the Office of Law gave an opinion. Counsel acted on that opinion by majority, made the appointment. So at this point, there would be no controversy that a Court of Common Pleas would be able to decide on. And we are not allowed to request the Court of Common Pleas to give us prospective advice going forward with how to interpret anything. So I guess if, if, if the situation had been different and counsel received the, the opinion from the Office of Law and disagreed with the opinion, at least if, if the decision hadn't been made to make the appointment, there would be arguably a controversy that could be presented before the court. I still don't know, even in that circumstance, if there would be. But there's not here. That's the issue.
So, so if we appointed a member based on counsel's, on legal advice, and that member's not supposed to sit on there according to our charter, what's our remedy?
Who, well, who's asking? I mean, counsel is the one that appointed the person to the, to that.
On the, on the opinion of the solicitor.
Regardless of, of why they did it, they appointed an individual to that board.
But if the opinion of the solicitor was that it was against the charter, then we would have voted no for the person, correct?
I don't, I can't speculate what-
So, but my question is, how do we get a legal opinion regarding, or a legal determination from the court if we get bad opinions from the solicitor?
First of all, you're once removed from, even from the discussion because you're asking counsel now to ask for a declaratory judgment regarding a decision that counsel made by a majority. So you're speaking really, in this instance, from the position of a member of the minority, you know, who, whatever your position was, wasn't agreed with, so-
But the question that was asked was, can that person sit on the board before we voted? That was the question. And the opinion was, yes, she can. And clearly, we asked, I asked about the provisions in the charter and it says, no, that they cannot. So counsel voted based on the legal opinion of the solicitor. So what is the remedy for counsel to challenge that, to challenge that?
Counsel is the one who decided to accept the position of the-
So she's sitting on the board illegally, in my opinion. How do I remedy that as a counsel member?
I don't know what-
Do I file as a member of counsel? She's sitting on the board illegally, in my opinion.
I'm, I'm here to give advice to counsel.
Right, okay.
And as far as whether or not you would have standing, I, I don't believe so. But I, I'm not going to, like, issue and give you an opinion.
All right, so let's deal with another hypothetical. So the election happens, they go to certify the election, and the county gets challenged on the fact that the person sitting on the board is not a legal member of the board. Now what happens?
I'm not going to speculate. I'm just, I'm telling you specifically, this resolution that you're requesting, that if you're going to, if counsel votes at this point to direct the Office of Law to file, or even to secure outside counsel, to secure a declaratory judgment, then an action that counsel voted on by a majority was illegal will get thrown out of court.
Right, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, maybe it's not a declaratory statement. Maybe it should be a writ of, it wouldn't be a writ of mandamus either, whatever.
I, I'd rather if you, like, this, I happened to see when it came across and, and I, I, I did have an opportunity to review the act before I came, walked in here. This is why I like having our weekly conversations.
Sure, yep.
So we could debate things like this before we would get to, to this point. But it's, it's difficult enough sitting up here and having an issue like this come up. And then hopefully, I've had at least a certain amount of experience with, with some of these things to be able to opine on it. But I, I certainly don't want to get in the habit of doing a legal analysis out loud at a public meeting without having an opportunity to really sit down and take a look at it and discuss it. So if you-
So when we, when we had our meeting prior to counsel being our first meeting, and they, and we were told that if we disagree with the opinion of the solicitor, we can take it to the third floor. What's the process for that?
I don't recall telling you that.
No, no, they told us that.
That's not true.
Yes, it is true.
That's absolutely incorrect.
Absolutely is true.
That's absolutely incorrect.
That's exactly what you said.
In order to take a case in any court, whether it's to the Court of Common Pleas or whether it is to the federal court, there has to be an actual case and controversy. And that's when the case gets brought to court. That statement I said, if, if there is a controversy between county counsel and the administration, the Office of Law will, under our rules of professional conduct, have to remove ourselves from that. The administration will have to get their own counsel. And county counsel will have to get their own counsel. And then the matter will be decided by the Court of Common Pleas.
Well, that's totally not what I heard. I might, and there's four other people that were sitting there that heard that same thing that I just said. But I'm not going to, I'm not going to debate it in front of everybody.
The Office of Law offers opinions, offers opinions to counsel, to the county manager, to the division heads, and to the department heads. We do that every single day. We do that as lawyers, whether we represent Luzerne County or we represent individuals.
And it is your opinion.
And it's up to our clients whether they accept our opinion or they don't. And any lawyer in this room will agree with me on that.
And what if we don't? What is our remedy?
There was a vote of counsel. What Attorney DeLuca is trying to explain to everybody in this room is that there is no case in controversy because counsel, the majority of counsel, voted.
Based on your opinion?
I, they could have voted because it was a Tuesday evening. There is no evidence of record that any counsel member voted yes or no based on the Office of Law's opinion.
So we have, so we have no remedy if you give an opinion that we don't feel other than to vote no? Is that correct?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Ms. Hauk.
If I could just ask the question, Mr. DeLuca. So in the future, if there is a solicitor's opinion that's given and some people don't, don't necessarily agree with that opinion and question the opinion, that maybe the proper thing to do would be to request to table the action until we can get an opinion on the opinion, rather than take action as a counsel? Because once you take action as a counsel, you're actually taking an action, right?
I, I think that would actually be best practice. And I think the first day that I sat here, one of the things that I, I had mentioned was the fact that I, I don't have all this stuff completely memorized. And that it's helpful if discussions regarding controversial or, or subjects that, where there may be differing opinions, if those things could be sort of, if we could do those before we would get to a public meeting. And I know, I mean, I've had discussions with many counsel members on, even in my short time sitting here, on various issues. And it's important that I have all the facts as well and that the Office of Law has all the facts. And sometimes sitting up here, we're not able to get the entire picture. So it is helpful to do it beforehand, and I agree with you, that would be a best practice.
Rather than taking an action, which then relieves the controversy, it removes the controversy.
As far as your ability to, to request some sort of outside help, in this case, I'm not saying that that was the only thing that, that, that really sounded the death knell to the, to that issue. But certainly in this case, that's the main hurdle that you would have, is that counsel, counsel would be the one requesting the declaratory judgment, but counsel is the one that already by a majority made the decision. So you're right. And, and in this case, it would have been better had it been tabled.
Okay, thank you.
So, so if I could get some clarity on the decision, could we, we all received the email that says the person sitting on the Board of Elections is able to sit there because she's not an officer of the party? I think that was the determination that was sent out by the county counsel, or by the county solicitor. So my question is, it says in the charter that if you file a nomination paper, you can't sit on the Board of Elections. So if, if a member of the Board of Elections wants to file a nomination paper for county counsel, they don't have to step off the board, correct?
Oh, you're, you're-
Because they're not an officer.
I'm not prepared to discuss that. I, I really don't know the answer to that.
That was the opinion of the solicitor's office. If I, if I interpreted it correctly, what the email said, is that right? An officer of a political party, it says, is your interpretation.
But that's the language from the charter. And if we want reading statutory interpretation 101, we can give you a Reader's Digest version. It's the language that appears in the document. If you want the document changed, there is a process that counsel or the people of Luzerne County can take. The language in the section that is referenced in the opinion is clear and unequivocal. If counsel has an issue with that language, then my recommendation is that you change the charter.
So the person filed nomination, no, I'm sorry.
No, no, I have a question. Since you're the Office of Law, the head of the Office of Law, and Vito is in the Office of Law, isn't your decision his decision?
Actually, this decision is, it-
I mean, your opinion is his opinion.
This opinion was actually rendered by input from various assistants, including Attorney DeLuca. I can tell you this. I make my decisions based on input from all my solicitors because they are brilliant.
So, so the, the person filed nomination papers, is she allowed to stay on the ballot, on the board? The person who we're talking about, is she allowed to stay on the board?
I think that's a separate question at this point.
Well, okay. Can we get an answer, can we get an answer to that question? Because she's, she's currently sitting on the board right now.
Yeah.
And she filed nomination papers, and the charter says, if a person sitting on the board files nomination papers, they have to step off the board. Does she have to step off the board?
Mr. Griffin, honestly, this, it's, it's hard enough to represent an entity like Luzerne County under the Home Rule Charter, considering it is a novel, somewhat novel form of government. It's a, there's not case law. The statutes have not, our code and, and charter has not been interpreted by hundreds of years of, of case law. But to ask now at a public meeting for us to give advice that doesn't involve something that's before the counsel at this point, I absolutely will not do it.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I will just end it with this statement, is the charter clearly says, if you file nomination papers, you can't sit on that board. So either counsel can file a resolution to declare vacancy at the next meeting, or we can leave ourselves open for litigation from somebody who decides they're going to sue the county. That's fine. But that's the last I'll say about the statement. I go on record as saying that person shouldn't be on the board. I go on record as saying I don't agree with the solicitor's opinion, and I'll end it at that. Thank you very much.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Someone withdraw that or revoting?
Withdrawn.
You're withdrawing your second, Mr.?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Regretfully.
Going down to number nine. Discussion regarding resolution transferring 2020 adopted budget funds from account 510.16 for merit raises. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Hauk, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Urban? On the question.
Mrs. Swett, can we hear on this? This is something the county administration supports. I think we're just having an issue with the numbers.
Well, before we get to that, anybody else with questions? Mr. Swett, please.
As Mr. Griffith stated, this came out around the, early February. Every year, this year and last year and the year before that, or every year I've been here, an email went out to all county employees stating when the raises will go into effect. The raises go into effect and when the retro payments will go into effect. So I guess my first question is, I, I'm not debating numbers at all. They're provided by the manager to all of counsel. The $25,485.46, which is saying unspent. So in fact, to give you a little bit of a timeline. February 7th, January 31st, manager sends this email out. Mr. Griffith drafts this on February 2nd. February 7th, there's a county payroll. All non-representative employees' salaries are changed to the new rate. Per, this is per the memo that was sent out earlier in the year. February 21st, payroll comes, all employees get the retro payment, which is the $25,000. This has already been paid to county employees, as was past practice in prior years. Because just like any, any kind of contract, it goes back until January 1st. So the, there is no $25,485.46. Now to the second part, the $31,109.59. That's all funds. So some people, Ms. Hill's division, is not general fund. There's a 910 fund, the 920 fund. So how could you take money from a fund that's not the general fund and put it in the general fund reserve fund? So the agencies in 911, meaning all the human service agencies, is $20,654.18. That's the dollar amount of, of the $31,000. District Attorney's Office of Unspent is $142.31. I don't think the row offices should be included. Again, it's counsel's determination. I'm just giving you what I think the backup for the number is. The courts do not use 3355.33. So again, Mr. Petry agrees that it should be moved. We think the number should be $6,957.77 for those reasons. $25,000 was already paid and goes back to January 1st, as in previous years. Email was sent to all of county employees, what we've done the past years. That's the $25,000, and the $31,000 is all funds. The only portion that is general fund portion is a little bit less than $7,000, $6,957.77.
$6,900?
$57.77.
We would support, I'm sorry. County administration would support moving that to the reserve. We have no plans on spending those funds. And counsel could make a determination as to whether or not you would like to move the remainder of the court's funds or the district attorney's funds to the general fund as well. That's, that's the next issue as well.
We have a motion and a second for the resolution that was submitted. You've heard Mr. Swett's analysis of the monies involved in the resolution. Do we have any amendments? I'll make a amendment that we do 6957.77. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry? Anyone else?
Were you including your amendment to move the other money into the agency ones? So we can do it all in one? You said the remaining merit raises that are going to the agencies, that should be transferred back to the general fund as well, right?
They don't, they only pay the portion matches that was provided. So some of the agencies are 4% match, a 10% match. The other is federal and state funded. So like aging, that's 0% discounting, provides no money to aging.
Right.
So to take that money back when we don't provide any money.
Well, we don't have the money to take it back.
Correct.
From the general fund.
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
Yep.
On the amendment, roll call, please, to make the number 6957.77. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
On the resolution with the amendment of 6957.77. We had a motion by Ms. Hauk, second by Mr. Urban. Roll call, please.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Open comment? Mr. Knapp? On at this time, Mr. Mantle?
A little quick comment that I have to make. When the voting is going on for these different money matters- When the voting is going on for these different money matters, sort of staggers my mind. There's, there's a lot of money out there that is being allocated for the county, but you're saying it can't be put back into the county general fund? Is that what you're saying?
Is that your question?
Okay. And when you do a vote, it, it would be nice for the public to know if it's five for yes and six for no.
The last, the last vote was unanimous.
Well, I didn't hear the, you know, all through the night, I haven't heard any.
The secretary usually announces, or clerk, I should say.
I guess I'm sitting way in the back and I can't hear.
Oh, I'll have to get your front row seat.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to. But like I said, the monies that are being sloshed around in these different, like 269, he gave a good presentation about the monies, but is that all just from tax revenue and...
Well, if you, when you get to your question, I'll, I'll try to help you with that.
It's in, if it's all in tax revenue, I'd like to know. And also, is there any kind of, I, I want to say it because it influences something else, but is there a rainy day fund that the county has for a buffer? That's the second, that's the third question.
Okay.
And the last question is, do municipalities have license plates for vehicles? This is, this is part of the, the last one, I didn't get it. And these vehicle tags that we're going to be charged $5 for, does the municipalities have to pay for that? Like the sanitary department? Do they have a special license plate? Or are they in tone with the $5 fee for registration? Okay, thank you.
All right. The monies that were talked about are human service monies. Mr. Mantle?
Yes.
Much of that human service monies is provided through the state and federal money, which means it's not part of the general budget.
Okay.
So we can't take money back from the state or federal government that we don't have in our general budget. And that's why there is a differential in the dollars amounts. Okay? Your, your question about the municipal license plates, I believe?
Yes.
You'll have to probably check with the state. There are guidelines about who is eligible and who's not eligible.
$5 fee is what I'm talking about.
And that's, the state has guidelines in that regard, who is eligible to pay, who's not eligible. Okay? They make those guidelines, it's their law. What was the other one? You had three questions.
Do we have a rainy day fund?
Oh, we have a reserve in the budget of $400 and some odd thousand dollars.
We just moved $6,000 into it.
Yep. So we have $6,000 more.
So what's the total budget that you have the rainy day fund for?
It's under $500,000.
$500,000.
It's under $500,000.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. McGinley, could I speak that? I thought it's something that...
Well, we have other people who I've got to get to first. Okay? Mr. Raybo?
With respect to the $5 fee that was just voted on to be extended to 2021, I agree wholeheartedly with Ms. Howke and Mr. Urban with respect to the fact that this would let, it's not just letting the manager. I do not blame the manager 100% on this. He shouldn't be blamed 100% on this, because this was brought on by the state from the very beginning. I put the lion's share of the burden on them, because what they did was establish the $5 nuisance fee to get them off the hook because they knew they were diverting money to the state police. I don't, I don't have anything against the state police either. I think the state police does a fantastic job, and the PennDOT crews are suffering for it, because it was the state police commissioner, the one who retired, not the current one, who said that the money was to go for troopers that would go to the road crews to ensure their safety while they worked on the road and bridge projects. So, that money, you think $750 million is going for the troopers that go to the road crews? Because I could tell you, there's not many troopers that are going to those road crews to ensure their safety. $750 million worth. Ain't happening. It's going to the pensions. And by the way, I kind of forgot to mention the fact that statutorily, that's not allowed to be given away like that, the money to the state police. Under Article 8, Section 10A of the state constitution, clearly says money that is not used for road and bridge repair shall be considered a loan, a loan to be paid back at the end of the fiscal year. So by definition, the state assembly is violating the state constitution in giving away money. So I want to know from our state representatives, maybe Mr. Haas and the Legislative Committee can ask that question, when do the state taxpayers have to pay back that money? The $4.2 billion that the auditor general said that was diverted, plus the $750 million for this year, and the $600 million that's proposed by Governor Wolf for next year's budget? When's that all have to be paid back? Because that's what the state constitution says. Okay, and on the work session, I have a question with regards to the Tax Claim Bureau for the parcels of land. According to the, the different procedures, I would like to add, you know, for the discussion, you know, delinquent tax or delinquent utility bills. A lot of the bidders seem to get off the hook in terms of those who want to bid on those parcels, that they have delinquent utility bills and they're allowed to bid on those, those parcels over the years. So I think that should be allowed to. Mr. McGinley, I'll finish.
Mr. Raybo, please, you can have another comment at the end of the work session.
I'm gonna finish.
Thank you.
All right.
Anthony?
Let me take much of your time up, but I know we have a lengthy meeting here. My, my advice is like Mr. Haas was saying with the state. We've been burdened by the state, there's, I don't, I don't want to go into heavy detail. We're paying 85 cents on a gallon of gas, you know, to take care of our roads. You know what? And the municipalities and the counties are the ones that are suffering, because we don't get a lot of money from the state. I think the board should draw a letter up, and you know what? Call the, call the senators and your state representatives in our district and say, listen, we need money for the county. You can't be burning the taxpayer all the time. Maybe they could get us some kind of money for the county itself. Let them come out and do something. I mean, you guys are put on the hook all the time here, where the money's got to come up. Let the state do something. You know what? Just like when they brought the casinos in, it was $600, it was supposed to go to every tax property taxpayer on their house. They lied about that. You know what? There's something could be done. You know what? And these guys that are working down in Harrisburg, they work for the people. So you know what? Write them a letter. Say, you know, we have concerns, we need money for our roads, we need money for our bridges. They're getting enough money between the casinos and, and the gas tax, and then the last four years, they changed, they raised all the notary fees, the truck and car registrations. What are they doing with the money in Harrisburg? You know what? And I, and I understand, you guys are putting a predicament here. But I think you guys should draw a letter up, send it to Senator Udjack, send it to Lisa Baker. Let them, you know, let them come out and see, see if they could get us some money for the county. Do something. They're elected by the people. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Knapp?
I thank you. I feel the economy, the robust economy is adequate for producing the money the county needs for any fix of roads, bridges. I, I feel strongly that, that it is important that we not allow people to nickel and dimus as they have been. And, and going forward, I hope that the voters, when they go to the voting booths, signal out and appreciate the people that voted against nullifying this. One other thing I wanted to ask in regards to snow removal. With this being a light season, generally kind to us without the necessity of salt and such, what money is saved in regards to that, with regards to the county? And I'm sure that's quite a bit of money. What, what go, where, where does that money go to if we get through this, this season without any major snowstorms? That's my question for you.
As far as the winter season, I think we still have about a month that we have to be concerned with. And then probably at the end of that month, probably towards the end of March, that would probably be the time to look at, see where we stand as far as what money was budgeted for that kind of task versus what had been spent. So sometimes, as you all know, March is a tough month around here as far as weather, so we'll wait for, maybe towards the end of March to see if we can get some kind of estimate on that. Anyone else? Yes. Mr. Dwyer?
Just two quick questions, just to clarify for myself. So council voted out an ordinance tonight as far as the vehicle registration goes, and, and the vote essentially, just to clarify, was we're going to allow it to sunset, but we moved the date from 2020 to 2021. Is that correct?
It's really not even a sunset anymore, it's just a termination date of...
Okay, no, that's fine.
Ball 31-21.
The next question is kind of for Mr. Pedry. We, we got the rain tax bill, and I'm not going down that road, but being we're talking about roads and bridges and stuff like that, the county owns 128 miles of road?
Correct.
Okay, so our county rain tax bill was roughly 198,000. We negotiated it down to 118 and change. Is that 118 total? Does that include the fee that Wyoming Valley Sanitary is assessing against road surfaces that the county owns too? Or is that just for buildings?
I don't know if it also includes roads. Any, do you know that, that, the sanitary theory bill also includes our county roads?
That includes all our obligations.
That includes all, so that's...
They take into consideration actual roadways.
Okay.
Okay, no, I mean, that's fine, but I was, I was led to believe from their, their paperwork and whatnot that roads were impervious surfaces, and the only roads that were exempt were actual state routes. The county-owned roads and the township or municipal-owned roads were thereby taxable under the stormwater fee.
Our bills for...
I will check into that, but that is not my issue.
Okay. I'll, I'll report back to you on that.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Newman?
Mr. Governor.
Mr. Newman?
May I comment on the election board situation that was brought up?
Sure, yep.
Can a citizen, voter, and taxpayer file an objection to the appointments on that election board?
I think you're probably, well, I...
I'm asking, I'm asking, maybe I'm asking for a legal opinion. I'm asking a question.
And...
And I'm going to tell you with great respect that it's hard enough to represent this government without also giving advice on what you're...
Well, I, I have, I have a problem with those two appointments, because it's specific in the Charter, Section 804G, that if an individual files a petition, and there's some ambiguity in it, but if they file, the word petition is mentioned, filing a petition, okay? Then you may have two illegal appointments, in which case council has the obligation to remove them and reappoint. It's my question. Do I get an answer at some point? And, and I'm not, I'm not trying to pin you down right now.
I would just tell you that I'm not aware of any cause of action that you would, that anyone could file without having what's called standing. So if you have standing to file an action in court, that's one hurdle.
No, no, I'm, I'm not asking the court. I'm asking the question to council. Can I file an objection with council that the appointments were illegal?
Well, I think you're...
I'm not going to court with it.
I understand what you're, but I think what you're saying is, you're reading of the Charter, and you specified the section, you believe that those could be illegal appointments, right?
I don't think it was investigated far enough by this council before they made that.
That's fine, but I mean, that's your question.
That's my question.
Okay. Council would not be the person, the group that would be doing that, as far as giving you an opinion.
In other words, you're going to deep six them.
No, I didn't say that. I said, I said council is not the group that would be doing that.
Well, you made the appointments.
Yes.
You made what may, you made what may have been illegal appointments, and down the road, that could lead to some serious problems in terms of voter certifications, election certifications, excuse me, election certifications. It's a very serious problem, and I do think you need to take a further look at it and perhaps answer my question next, bring it up for another discussion. I mean, you've got a problem here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Carr, Salersburg, Pennsylvania. I really don't understand Mr. Pedry's explanation around the $725,000 being allocated to that specific road. Many roads throughout the county are in worse shape, where thousands of cars drive down them every day. I, let's, let's come to an agreement, maybe that it's just a coincidence that the road happens to be near Mr. Miracle's Industrial Park. It's unfortunate, but it seems to be the case. Secondly, I'd like to take up Mr. Schnee's offer to meet with District Attorney Salavantis regarding the purchase of her automobile after the taxpayers of this county were, received an increase in their yearly tax bill. So I will forward my information to you, Mr. Chairman McGinley, where Mr. Schnee can reach me to schedule that appointment to better understand that decision that was made. And thirdly, if Mr. DeLuca could assist me in to better understand, I purchased a property from the repository in Luzern County back in 2016 for $500. I went through the process, and I was assessed a $10,000 amount to be taxed on a yearly basis, but I've, I've received information contrary that according to state law, I should only be assessed at $500 for the amount that the property was purchased for. So for the last four years, I've, I've paid and assessed a value of $10,000 on a property that I should have only paid $500 for, on a vacant piece of land. Why does the county act contrary to what state law is regarding assessments?
I can take that one, yeah. Mr. Carr, we don't have the ability to automatically lower that assessment down to $500. That would be a spot reassessment. However, you do have the ability to appeal your assessment. The, the assessment board regularly hears those appeals down to $500. I can't think of one that was ever denied down to $500, but the county does not have the ability to specifically pull, when they say this one can be lowered. We don't have the ability under the law, but the assessment board does. So I would encourage you to go to the Luzern County Appeals Board and, and, and appeal your assessment to $500 based upon your 2016 statement.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one comment. Regarding the ordinance that was passed, I had two other triggers in the ordinance with dates that weren't addressed. I mean, granted, you all changed the date to 2021, but I had, as far as notifying the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation on June 2nd, and then the ordinance, you know, being effective September 1st, 2020. So are we going to actually notify PennDOT by June 2nd of this year? And are they going to actually honor that, you know, in so far in advance? Because it's like a year and a half, will they just...
Well, I think it's good that we're notifying in advance instead of behind this.
Right, but I had, I specifically made it 90 days in order to...
Which is the requirement.
Right, which is the requirement. But are they actually going to remember if you put it that far in advance?
Well, I think we can do that on, on that date, and then we can send... Well, I think we can do that on that date, and then we can send a reminder if we wish, a little bit later, to remind them that the date has been changed.
You know, that would be my only objection there.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn?
Wait, I have something else, Mr. McGinley.
Okay.
In regard to Mr. Carr's statement about the assessment, the Section 628, and this is one of the issues that I was bringing up on the work session regarding this issue. Section 628 of the real estate law says assessment restrictions on property sold from repository. Notwithstanding any other provisions of the various assessment laws of this Commonwealth, the price for which a property is sold under this subarticle of the Act only shall be deemed to be the fair market value of the property for tax assessment purposes. The assessment and the consideration upon which it was made shall not be changed unless any of the following occur. It goes through, it says how they can reassess. So at the time when somebody buys something from a repository, that's the time when the tax assessment is lowered to the fair market value. Not when appeal happens, not when somebody files a claim with the Board of Assessments and pays money to the Board of Assessments for a hearing and all of that. It's in the law that as soon as you buy it for fair market value, that's what your tax is at. So if Mr. Carr has to go before the Board of Assessment, I think that's a step that's not required by the law.
Okay. Anyone else? Just one announcement we've made, I've made one change with the committee assignments, with segments now within strategic initiatives, and Mr. Perry is with real estate. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Schnee, do we have a second? Ms. Sedman? All in favor? Aye. We'll reconvene at five minutes of eight. So I made that part of the record.